Second by Councilmember Ashby. Further discussion of adding that agenda item. All in favor of adding that agenda item, say aye.
Aye.
Be opposed? Item is, has been added. Is there a motion? Councilmember Cuchary?
Mayor, I would move to approve an emergency interim zoning ordinance of the city of Port Orchard, Washington, amending chapter 20.39 of the Port Orchard Municipal Code to adopt interim regulations related to social services facilities, providing for a public hearing, severability, corrections and publication, and establishing an effective date.
Councilmember Rosa Pepe seconded that. And so, I'll start with, so, we, I think we, most of us have seen the headlines with the situation in Pauls Bow related to housing the sexually violent predators, and we've found some weaknesses in our code that need to be addressed, and this emergency ordinance will actually allow us to maybe put a pause on that and research this further and make sure that our code has provisions in it that we need to protect our community. So, Councilmember, or, not Councilmember Bond, Development Director Bond.
Yeah, I'll just elaborate on that a little bit. The chapter 20.39 which is being amended, under the residential use portion of the zoning table, we are adding a new subset of the use that is currently defined as all social services, as residential uses, and the new subsection is secure high-risk social services. And in that, for that use, we're proposing to make it a conditionally permitted use in the commercial corridor, the commercial heavy, and the light industrial and industrial flex zones within the city. And so, whereas currently, all social services are currently permitted outright, so this makes it so that you have to go to the hearing examiner, and then, in addition, we're establishing additional criteria that that new use is subject to. So, I think that is probably a good enough summary for the purposes of tonight's action.
Question, Mr. Bond? Councilmember Ashby?
What I'm remembering when we did an interim, an emergency interim ordinance before, there's some specific timeframes on this, is there not? As far as the hearing and us taking action?
Yes. Yes, correct. So, you'll have, we'll have to hold a public hearing within 60 days of our action tonight. So, we'll get that noticed in the paper and probably have it either the last meeting of May or the first meeting of June, depending on the publication deadlines. The other thing is that we are declaring an emergency tonight, and so, the voting rules are slightly different in terms of the majority that has to pass that, but that'll mean that it takes effect immediately rather than five days after publication.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor, just as a quick comment, this is, I appreciate that this is a different category of offenders, by all means, but it's not a lot different than what we're currently doing in the case of the state's work release facility in our industrial park that's located there versus in a residential zone.
I don't know the exact nature of that occupancy, but it's likely that that would be considered a secure high-risk social services facility, and so, but it's illegal existing use, so it's not, it's not going to be subject to new requirements unless they wanted to expand that.
I appreciate that, it's just that, I guess, for the community's perspective, we're not really treating any differently than we have in the past when it came to citing a facility of similar nature, different fences, of course, but the state work release facility has been located out in our industrial park and has been there for well over 20 years without any incidents, I would add, but, so, it's kind of treating it the same.
And it's appropriately located in our industrial park?
Yeah, and it's worked fine for over 20 years in that situation, so.
But our current code for these others facilities could cite them in a mixed-use or residential type area, which-
We don't want that.
We don't want that, that's right. So, other questions or comments? Okay, you'll be voting on the emergency interim zoning ordinance with the city of Port Orchard, amending chapters 20.39 of Port Orchard's municipal code. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hear none? The motion carries. We are done with our business this evening, we're going to get to our committee reports, and then we'll get to our citizen comment period. So, Finance Committee, I'm not sure that you've met?
We've not met, and we do need to determine the next day to meet, but we haven't as of yet.
And our Finance Director is at a conference, so, at our next meeting-
It'll have to be-
Yep, we'll have to get that meeting on the calendar. Economic Development Tourism, I know you met yesterday.
We did, and that was where we discussed the downtown community center. I believe you-
Yeah, I think we covered that one.
You were on a roll, and you were, said land use earlier, so.
I did.
So, anyway, so, we did discuss that yesterday. We also had an update on the video production we're having done for our website and to put on the KITA website, and that's moving forward. Clerk Reinerson and I met this afternoon and did some fine tuning of content on that. And we also were informed that we have signed the contract for the summer foot ferry service. And we also had a discussion on, now, this is exciting, the restroom requirements during our special events downtown, and we're putting on our application, we're requesting the applicants to describe how they're going to-
Address the-
Address the need for restrooms, and we decided that we need to offer them some guidance in that package, so that's coming forward. And then, the last thing we talked about, which I thought was very interesting, was our building permits and our development activity, and I didn't know, Nick, if you were going to speak to that?
Yeah, I was going to mention that, but if there's anything you're supposed to say while I'm on the phone.
Yeah, no, I was just going to say that as far as building permits, for the first three months of the year, we're averaging, this is for single-family residents, 10 a month, and the other thing Nick had put together, just projects that he's aware of that have had some contact with our community development department, we don't know if they will actually perform or not, but there were over 1,800 single fa-
Housing units.
Housing units, and about half of those were single-family residents and half were multifamily residents, and I'm sure he will speak more to that, but it was an interesting discussion, and that's-
I have asked Mr. Bond, too, at one of our May meetings, to prepare a bit of a planning docket, I know we've been not having the work-study meetings and adding those discussion items to these business meetings, but staff, and I are peddling hard, Mr. Dorsey's still got a lot of projects, and Mr. Bond and his staff are working on numerous things, so I just wanted you guys, you'll get an update on that, and then I asked him to include, too, that, some of that information, and expand on it, what is shared at economic development.
At the meeting, you want to talk, anything, because Steve was there, Segal was there talking about the, the letter that we talked about tonight, and that everybody else was, you know, discussing it also, about the support for that, I don't know if you wanted to add anything?
No, we did have, at our economic development meeting yesterday, Port Commissioner Strackle, John, joined us, and so did Steve Segal, and they were both there discussing the community center development and the importance of having a united front on that, and the potential opportunities that it will provide for downtown. Feel free to add, Jim.
No, the only reason I was bringing that up was because, Councilmember Cuchary, when you were talking about, you know, cart and horse, I think it's really county, port, and us all moving forward at the same time, so I think that's there, it's just a question of who signs the letter out first.
Perfect. Is that it for your report?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, Utility Committee?
Yes, we're meeting next week, Monday, 9:30 a.m., and I'll just roll into Sewer Advisory is April 24th, 6:30 p.m., and Festival of Chimes and Lights is next Monday at 3:30 p.m.
Wow, so efficient, nice. Land Use?
So, land use met on March 25th, we had full attendance by council and staff, it was relatively light and, I'd say, one of our quicker meetings. We talked about a request by the United Methodist Church on Kitsap Street to create additional parking spaces by placing tick marks in the right way, like what we have out here. There was some discussion about how that actually is kind of counterproductive because of the space between the tick marks, and Mark, Director Dorsey was going to talk to the church about that very issue, as well as looking at an extended yellow curb that wraps around the corner, perhaps, I don't know, 20 feet too far, maybe?
Yeah, and we've reduced that distance so that-
So, we've got them additional parking, so we believe that their needs were, have
been met. We talked about the nuisance code that was actually adopted tonight, so I won't go into that, and then the last idea, last idea that was talked about was affordable housing in the form of accessory dwelling units and what we could do to encourage that development. There are some ideas that are being tossed around with city staff, there's also some legislation that's being tossed around by the state, and I think we're going to be looking at maybe some designs that can be permitted rather quickly if they're what we would consider maybe basic designs, and Director Bond noted that there are companies in Seattle that offer prefabricated ADUs which could streamline the development permit even quicker, and then, there was some discussion that Kitsap County and the city of Bremerton are looking at an affordable housing inventory, and that we should ask to be a part of that effort as well, and I don't know where we are with that request, and that meeting was adjourned in an hour. And our next meeting is April 22nd at 9:30 at DCD's offices.
Thank you for your report. Lodging Tax, if I-
We need to warn you.
Wonderful. Okay, Outside Agencies, the only thing I could report, I, Mr. Clausen shared with me early this evening that the second high-speed ferry, the MV Reliance, is being delivered tomorrow, and it'll show up in Bremerton, I think 11 o'clock or so tomorrow.
11:30.
11:30, and then after it's spent a little bit of time in Bremerton, it'll be tied up over here in Port Orchard tomorrow afternoon, so, crew will be training on it for the next few weeks, but it'll be in service very soon, so. Ending up from K, I don't, the other?
Yeah.
I don't really recall anything else significant.
Do you want to speak to the RPTPO?
I can, or you can. Port Orchard is a member of the Peninsula Regional Transportation Planning Organization, and the Peninsula RPTO has been in existence since 1990. We have what's called the Lead Planning Agency, and that has always been staffed by the Olympic Region of the Department of Transportation, and they, the Department of Transportation let us know about a year and a half ago, almost exactly a year ago now, that they no longer wanted to provide that service, and so, the RPTO needed to find a new lead planning agency, and, I shouldn't say unfortunately, but I'm vice chair of the Peninsula RPTO, and they raised my hand to head the selection committee for a new lead planning agency. So, we've been working on that with not a lot of success until December or January, when I approached Kitsap Transit to see if they could be the lead planning agency. It's a four-county region, it's Jefferson, Clallum, Mason, and Kitsap, and the requirements to be the lead planning agency, you have to be a regional organization or a city, county, or member of the RPTO, and so, that really limits your universe of who can do the work for you, and there were no other jurisdictions or entities within this group that had the capacity to take on the lead agency work. So, Kitsap Transit very generously did due diligence and has agreed to do that, and we're in the process now of completing, it's required us to be recertified by the state, and we're in the process of putting together all the documentation for the recertification and bringing Kitsap Transit on board. We're very grateful for the willingness of Kitsap Transit and the ease with which they're making this transition possible. So, anyway, we will be bringing forth, I believe, at our last meeting in April, since we're not having a work-study, a new interlocal agreement, and the jurisdictions that are active in the RPTO will need to sign that, so we'll be bringing that forward, and that's our next step. So, again, we're very grateful to Kitsap Transit, and again, the Peninsula RPTO functions a lot like the Puget Sound Regional Council, they do transportation planning for the four-county area, and it's just the rural sections of Kitsap County that's involved. So, anyway.
So, is your desire to have that ILA as a discussion item or as a business item to discuss?
It needs, the ILA, however you, however we choose to do it, we need to have it executed by the middle of May.
Okay.
So, we can put it, we can have it as the discussion item one meeting, and we can vote on it the next.
Vote on it first meeting in, in May?
Correct.
Did you capture that? Perfect. Okay. Anything else for the outside agencies? Okay, Mayor's Report, just quickly, want to plug the Community Service Day on April 27th, can continue to add projects, we've added doing some beauty bark at Eda Turner Park and just across the bridge on that point, as we're getting ready to open up the next segment of the pathway, we'd like that area spruced up, too. As I spoke to earlier, we're not going to have a work-study next week, we'll be back in two weeks with probably another lengthy agenda, but I feel it's more efficient to have us all here, two longer meetings than three short meetings. And tour the Kingston Community Center, doing that tomorrow morning, reach out, talk to me here tonight if you want to go with me. The reason I'm going up there, it's, I'm told that it is similar to what we're proposing, and it's, it's management and operation is a model that we need to look at, so that's why I'm going to go up there, and the other, I just think it's a good idea for us to get an idea of how somebody else is doing something similar and get, and see how it's working. I understand it's very successful. And then, lastly, Representative Jesse Young is holding a town hall meeting on Saturday, yeah, here in the council chambers at 10 o'clock, anybody wishes to attend, and will be here on Saturday. That's all I have, Mr. Dorsey.
Yes, so, last Friday, I attended my first Public Works Board meeting, and I must say that I found it absolutely fascinating.
That's why we sent you.
Yeah, it's, it's interesting that the Public Works Board is the only state agency that's hired a lobbyist, and because that's been gaining traction from other entities stealing from the Public Works Assistant account, now there's a big push to have the Public Works Board not have a lobbyist, so I found that conversation fascinating. And then, next Tuesday, if there's anybody that might be looking at funding through the Department of Commerce and Public Works Board, their, Department of Commerce and Public Works Board's putting on a free training for infrastructure asset management, and I'll be moderating that day, it's at the Oxford Suite, so, if anybody wants to find out more or go to that, let me know.
Mr. Bond?
Yes, just to add to what Councilmember Ashby reported from Economic Development Committee, we have approximately 1,800 units of housing in the pipeline, that does not include what's proposed downtown, and that does not include anything but parcels, CD and E, and McCormick North Phase One at McCormick Woods, and so, some of those projects are further along than others, and all of them probably won't happen, but it certainly is a lot of development activity in the pipeline, and I think a big part of the reason we're seeing this is probably the opportunity zones incentives that we work so hard to get in place, and so, we may end up with a real building inspector and planner viewer crisis here in the near future. A couple of notable projects I did want to report on, we did take in permits for a new apartment complex on Sedgwick next to Fred Meyer, those, I think the first 40 or so units came in, two out of the five buildings that they want to build. We also took in permits for a Starbucks and the old Taco Bell on Mile Hill, as well as an Arby's in the NW, so, a couple of new commercial and fast food selections for everyone to enjoy. That is all.
Okay. Councilmember Cuchary's got a question for you, Mr. Bond?
Quick question, I received a call from a citizen on Sunday, just seems to be more activity maybe occurring up at the Stetson Heights property, can you give a little update on what might be occurring there?
Yeah, so, they have been working hard to get their site stabilized, they've been spraying hydro seed on all other slopes and, yeah, and getting their temporary erosion control ponds finished to the point that they'll be operational, so they're working very hard to try to get their stop-work order lifted, and they're doing work that is allowed under the stop-work order. I would expect we're going to hit the dry season here in another week, so, two out of the three stop-work orders will likely go away within the next week or two at the rate that they're going. The third one requires some environmental documentation to be submitted, but I would expect them to resume full grading activity in the, in the very near future.
Thank you for that update. Ms. Gates?
Nothing for me this evening.
Ms. Reinerson?
Yes, I have to apologize, but the time on the agenda for the Lodging Tax Committee meeting tomorrow is not at 9:30 a.m., it is at 5:30 p.m., so it is correct on the website, it's corrected on the front of the City Hall posting, and the notices sent to the committee is all correct at 5:30 p.m. tomorrow, so, we'll see the council member there.
Okay.
Oh, I have.
Thank you for your report. Okay, we're done with our reports, we're to the citizen, our second citizen comment period. Anyone wishing to address the council? We have three minutes. See Mr. Ballis coming up.
My name is Dick Ballis, I'm the owner of Ballis Motors here in Port Orchard. I'm here tonight because I think we have a business problem, or friendly business. We unfortunately don't have curbing on the highway, which I understand is owned by the state, which is Bay Street. If a car from a different community comes in, and I have a lot of customers come from Seattle, and from Bremerton, and North Kitsap, and all over, there's 85 inches between the fog line on the highway and the curbing. There is, the sidewalk is almost six feet, or five feet, it's 59 inches. This leaves a person pulling up to look at the car, or get out of the car and walk around the lot for business, about 15 inches, and I'm sure most of you are aware of the fact that some of the cars today, and the tires are not very high, but they're very wide, and when a car pulls up there and the people get out of the car, and it's about three inches of the tire is on the sidewalk, and they write a ticket on it. I don't think that's very business-friendly. Particularly when there's not a curbing. That was just a slope going down. The lot that we have that we acquired about two years ago does have a curbing and does have sidewalks, and it's hard for me to understand when you try to get these people to Port Orchard and give them a friendly attitude, and when they hand them a ticket for parking in front of the car lot. I open, I have two entryways, and there's a signed exit and entry, and I've tried to, since I have the new lot on the end, I try to leave room in front of the office for people to come in and park, so they don't have to park on the street. 15 inches in pulling the car, the smallest ones are about 70 inches wide, so that gives you about 15 inches between the fog line and the curb sidewalk, and that's real difficult. If there was a curbing there, it'd be a little different, and people could, wouldn't pull over the curb, and it's hard for me to explain to them why they're getting a ticket just to come over here to look at something to buy, and I think that as far as Port Orchard's concerned, I think my store brings in more taxes, other than Bruce Titus down the street than any other organization in downtown Port Orchard, and that's my beef. There's a lot of things came up tonight that are more important than this, but I think when you're trying to get people to come to Port Orchard and feel that it's a friendly place, giving them a ticket is not the right approach, and you try to park within 15 inches. Anyway, if the car truck, for example, is going down Bay Street and happens to have the big mirrors on the side-
We appreciate your comment.
You're absolutely going to lose either a finger or a head, or somebody's going to get hurt or something, and so, if they pull over and they catch a little bit of the sidewalk, I think there should be some sort of allowance or discretion before you write a ticket to somebody, and that's my beef, there tonight, there's been more important things came up than this, but to me, this is important. I would say 50 to 70% of my business is not in Port Orchard, it's coming from everywhere. This is a little different than what it used to be, when, now that everybody has computers, they know exactly what they're looking for and why, and where it's at, and I'm trying to get those people over here, we get the taxes, and everybody walks away happy. That's my beef, that there could be something done, and I feel sorry for the meter maid, she doesn't even feel comfortable about it, but she doesn't make the decisions.
I appreciate you coming tonight.
That's my beef tonight.
All right, thank you for sharing with us. Who to address the council?
My name is Stacy Bronson, and this is my daughter Paige Lutz, and we are residents of the Marley Apartments. And since the pocket park has been going in, we've had nothing but problems with the construction going on, partly the nails. This is picked up, just in one afternoon, 460 nails counted out, that we all get popped tires. Second of all, and we, several of us have gone over to complain about the barriers that are in place, okay? We can't see over them, I mean, to the point where you can see this van, when it was here, I couldn't even see it. I've almost hit two motorcycles. My daughter is disabled, she gets picked up, go ahead.
I get picked up for dialysis, Monday, Wednesday, Fridays, and twice, they've sent cars from paratransit services, and both times they sent, spent, sent cars, one almost hit a bicyclist, and the other one almost got hit by a car, so they have to send the vans, and these are big vans, so they have to turn around at the bottom of our driveway, and with the garbage now moved to the bottom of the driveway with the recycling and all the concrete molds that they have on-
Taking up parking.
Taking up our parking lot, it's really hard for them to do that.
And the drivers are frightened, the drivers discuss it with Paige that they're frightened. I have spoken to people at the city, spoken to this, a Darren, I, he's, I think he's in the planning office, and he said that there was some kind of, you know, approval for these barriers, and I kept telling him that they've got to come down, they've got to come off of this cement. Him and I have talked about it three or four days, and he still has not done anything about it. You can see how much easier it is, one of the neighbors knocked him down because they are, it's so scary for us. She knocked him down, and then you can see, easy, the car's coming, they've just got, there's got to be a change here, somebody's going to get hurt. Anyway, so, I just wanted to bring that to your attention, it's really scary for us. Please, have someone do something about it, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you for sharing tonight. Others wishing to address?
Do you want to put these in your parking lot?
Yeah, we don't want it either. Somebody's got to do something about these people.
Others wishing to address the council this evening?
Hi, my name is Jessica Lutz. I am also a tenant of the Marley Apartment Complex. I don't have a huge inconvenience like not being picked up for a medically necessity, medical necessity appointment. And I've been lucky enough to not be a victim of a tire puncture yet. But I would like to state that everything that has been going on there, numerous days in a row, the driveways have been blocked. We haven't been able to access our apartments. We've had to park near the Chamber of Commerce office or at the hotel next door and walk. And I'm sorry, I live there. I should be able to access my parking space in my home without having to walk a few city blocks. That's the end of my complaint.
Thank you for sharing your comments this evening. Others wishing to address the council this evening?
Good evening. My name is Karen Spangler. I also am a tenant of the Marley Apartments, and I just wanted to reiterate what has already been said. I have a small car, a Fiat, and I have a teenage daughter who I have to get to work. I have to take her to school, pick her up, and it's, it's downright dangerous. And I have also had many close encounters with almost hitting pedestrians and/or other cars. And when I spoke with the workers next door, the, one of the gentlemen there said that they are just following what the, there's an ordinance to protect pedestrians as they're walking by, so they have to have those barriers up at a certain point, you know, at a certain place. So I'm just asking, could we move them just a little bit back so that it could protect more people, I think? Because pedestrians are walking by, but if they don't get into the construction zone, we might hit them or other cars. It's, it's very dangerous. We've had multiple incidences where there have been close calls with cars. And I literally cannot see. And then the construction workers also put up a, a white sort of wooden and metal sign. So as you're coming, as you're coming out of the apartments, usually I have to turn left for the most part, which is the part where the barriers are. But then they put up another sort of white metal and wood thing on this side to block off the sidewalk. And so then I also could not see very well going that way. And just keep in mind that this is a hard parking lot for us to get out of under the best of conditions, because there are no, we don't have any stop signs of any sort at certain times of day, busy traffic times. There is just a continuous amount of people coming from both directions, and so we have to be very careful as it is. And so this barrier has just made it that much harder and downright dangerous. So I just ask that something please be done about that. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing your comments. Others wishing to address the council?
My name's Martha Mitchell. I also live at the Marley. Have you guys been driving by that pocket park project for your city improvement? You've been seeing the work, I'm hoping? It seems like it's been a really long project. I don't know if it had stop work orders, what the deal is. I'm, I'm concerned that we gave it to a company from Anacortes. I'm concerned it's been poorly inspected. I'm concerned that the safety and the health of us as it's going is one thing, but what I'm really concerned about here today is seeing all your improvements. And this walking trail has been one of your first projects to improve people, to bring them to the waterfront. And now you're making a pocket park to actually expose people to the waterfront so that they'll come down there, which sounds like a good plan, but it's toxic. There's a huge toxic shelf, a toxic beach, right? Inlet is very toxic. So I'm wondering why we're bringing people to the pocket park and sending them to the beach, and we have a big red sign that says this beach is toxic. So that's concerning when you want to improve the city so much. For me, and why? Why? Because we want to make the city more fancy or something like California? So would love to have our safety considered, but for the record, I believe that the pocket park has been designed to be dangerous. I believe there's going to be some litigation. That's why I want to be in the litigation room. I, I'm really concerned that you took a very natural environment. It had one log, and you could have put a pocket path or a walking trail through there. I, I should have come to the meetings about the planning, but I didn't know what was happening. So I'm really disappointed that you've removed all the natural beach things and disturbed the shoreline, that you've put in logs down there, approved with the planning of the project, logs down there that aren't natural. You've put in huge granite boulders there, which I assume are for children to climb on, granite boulders, and fall down on, and maybe hurt themselves. So I'm here to say I think this pocket park is really crazy. I don't know why you're doing all this development and planning when you don't have it together enough to even keep the public safe, let alone have them go there to a toxic beach. So I hope, A, that you don't give contracts to... Outside companies? B, that you try to make it safe during the construction, and you be careful when it's really open because it's going to be a dangerous place. Oh, the other thing is I, when they put the first walking trail to the Marley Apartment, have designated myself to clean up the beach and pick up the garbage. Every week I go down and clean up in between your waterfront park and the Marley. And I, I like to do it, and I'll continue to do it. I also pick up cigarette butts all along the path. And I've asked the Port of Bremerton if they're the ones responsible for maintaining the waterfront improvement, but they aren't coming there. I had to ask them to put the garbage. I had a garbage there for a while, and I was dumping it myself. Anyway, good to advance, but not very good planning and then maintenance afterwards. Zip.
Thank you for sharing your comments. Others wishing to address the council this evening? All right. With that, we're going to adjourn, actually, we're not adjourning our meeting yet. We, we have another executive session, but we will not take action after that executive session. It's... I mean, the contract's awarded. It's being, it's being built.
I can, I'll, I'll meet with the contractor tomorrow. I'll have those orange barricades. The issue is the sidewalks closed. People don't acknowledge that, and they're walking through the job site, so that's a liability. I'll meet with the, I'll meet with the contractor on improving site distance, nails, all those issues. As far as like stopping the project, there's actually two projects that were ongoing. One was the pathway project that got delayed because of a number of factors. Then there's a separate park project. So Segment Three of the pathway started earlier, and then it got delayed, and then, because of weather and strikes and things. And then the Rockwell Pocket Park. So it's the same contractor, but it's actually two different contracts. So the ship has sailed on the park. It's being constructed. So...
So I'd say we're sixty days?
We're going to be done in about a month and a half with both projects.
With that, we're going to head into the back room again for an executive session for potential litigation pursuant to RCW 40, 3110, and we will not be taking any action after the litigate, after the executive session. Fifteen minutes?